All right, I'm seeing everybody is in attendance, either in person or online. I'll go ahead and call the meeting to order for March 10th, 2025 at 6:02 PM. Welcome, everyone. Thanks for being here. And we'll go ahead and get started with the pledge of allegiance. If you'll join me, please. All right, thank you. Ms. Trimble, will you do the official roll call, please?
Happy to. Good evening. Beginning with Anderson.
Present.
Becerra.
Present.
Campbell.
Here.
Carolina.
Present.
Farmer.
Present.
Jones.
Present.
Jordan.
Present.
Nelson.
Present.
Nurgent.
Present.
Savage.
Present.
Cheryl.
Present.
Anne Musica.
Present.
Everyone's in attendance.
Okay, wonderful. Thank you. Great. So we do have one set of minutes from March 3rd, 2025. Do any council members have any questions or changes to those minutes? I'm not seeing any. So those minutes will remain as submitted. Thank you. And then the committee's schedule for this coming Wednesday, March 12th. Ms. Trimble, do we have any changes to this Wednesday's committee's schedule?
There are no changes that I'm currently aware of.
Okay, great. Thank you. And that committee's schedule, of course, is available online on Missoula City Council's website. Looks like they start at 9:00. Early light committee day. It was till mid-morning. All right. Thank you. Next, we move into special proclamations, presentations, and proclamations. And we start with our neighborhood council updates. Rose Park Leadership Team is on our agenda this evening. Is somebody here from the Rose Park neighborhood? All right. We'll go ahead and get the microphone turned on for you. You can adjust that microphone more comfortably, if you would please, so we can make sure that we hear you. Please say and say your name for the record, if you would too, please.
It's Audrey Hayes.
Audrey Hayes.
You can hear? All right. Okay. Our Rose Park Leadership Team members have been working on enhancements for Rose Park. And we were recently awarded a $7,500 reimbursement grant from the National Association of Realtors. That was great. We must use it, however, by December 19th of this year. We are also currently planning our general meeting, and it's tentatively scheduled now for May 18th. We normally would have that in the fall and September, but we've noticed that attendance isn't very high and it's challenging for some people because of other town events and back-to-school season. So we've decided we're gonna maybe have actually even two meetings, but this will be the general meeting in May. I mean, yeah, May 18th. At our February meeting, Ben Weiss from Public Works and Mobility Department spoke with us about community involvement in beautifying the three new traffic circles along Franklin. And he provided updates on the Higgins Avenue Corridor Plan. And that's about where we are. Any questions?
Any questions for Ms. Hayes? Yes. Counselor Jones.
Just want to say thanks. I know that that entire neighborhood has really been leaning in on Rose Park to make some improvements there, and thanks. That's awesome.
Pretty exciting.
Yeah, it really is. Thank you.
Great.
Thank you for your efforts. Really appreciate what you do for your neighborhood and the city. Thank you. All right. We'll next move on to our proclamations this evening, and we have two. The first is our Transit Operator Appreciation Day. So whereas public transit benefits all of us in Missoula by reducing traffic and parking congestion, improving air quality, and making our city more equitable and accessible to all, and whereas public transit operators fill an important role in our community by getting people where they need and choose to go from work and school to medical appointments, grocery stores, social and civic commitments, and other essential components of meaningful community engagement. And whereas public transit operators frequently go above and beyond the call of duty, working long hours and safely operating our transit system in rain, snow, extreme cold, wind, and a wide variety of challenging circumstances. And whereas public transit operators help build a connected and resilient community by knowing their passengers, celebrating their successes, aiding them in times of crisis, and greeting them every day. And whereas Mountain Line and U-Dash provide essential services to our community at Zero Fair for the benefit of all residents and visitors of Missoula. Now, therefore, I, Andrea Davis, Mayor of the City of Missoula in the state of Montana, hereby recognize the 18th day of March, 2025, as Transit Operator Appreciation Day. All right. And our next proclamation is, in conjunction with Missoula County, and it is for Women's History Month. So Missoula County and the City of Missoula, Montana, whereas American women of every race, class, and ethnic background have made historic contributions to the growth and strength of the United States in countless recorded and unrecorded ways, and whereas American women have played and continue to play critical economic, cultural, and social roles in every sphere of life of the United States, constitu- constituting a significant portion of the labor force both inside and outside the home. Constituting. Wow. I had one of those moments. Okay, constituting. That's that word. Constituting a significant portion of the labor force both inside and outside of the home. Woo. Whereas American women continue to perform the majority of uncompensated domestic work, and whereas American women have played a unique role throughout history by providing the majority of nation's volunteer labor force. And whereas American women were instrumental in establishing early charitable philanthropic and cultural institutions in the United States, and whereas American women of every race, class, and ethnic background have been at the forefront of every major progressive social change movement, and whereas American women have courageously served our country in the military, and whereas American women have been leaders not only in securing their own rights to suffrage and equal opportunity, but also in the abolitionist, abolitionist, my God, emancipation, industrial labor, civil rights, and peace movements, all of which have contributed to a more fair and just society for all. And whereas Missoula's own Jeanette Rankin was the first woman elected to the United States Congress, and whereas Missoula County made history in 1985 as the first in the nation to elect an all-female commission, with Barbara Evans, Anne Marie DeSau, and Janet Stevens serving on the board. And whereas despite these many contributions, the role of American women in history has been consistently overlooked, undervalued, and omitted from literature, teaching, and the study of American history. Now, therefore, we, the Board, Missoula Board of County Commissioners, and Andrea Davis, Mayor of the City of Missoula, do hereby recognize this month of March, 2025, as Women's History Month, and invite all residents to observe and celebrate through programs, ceremonies, and activities throughout the month of March, and to visit women'shistorymonth.gov and women's, Montana, women'shistory.org to learn more about the vital contributions of women in our country and state's history. Thank you. Sorry about slaying those few words. Boy. All right. Thanks, everybody. Appreciate again the Rose Park Leadership Team report. I am gonna take a few minutes to, before I review, well, real quickly, I'll just mention that we have two public hearings this evening. And then we have a relatively short consent agenda, no regular business items. We do have our state legislature update. And before we get started with those items, I did want to go ahead and address for council and members of the public that are here this evening and watching online the decision that was made around the Johnson Street Shelter funding. So the fiscal year 2026 budget estimates that we have made thus far indicate that the City of Missoula has around a $4 million budget shortfall in its general fund. And that would be before we consider the $2 million that we would have available to operate Johnson Street, because it would have to come out of our general fund. As, as you know, we have no further federal dollars. Federal dollars are the one-time money that have been helping pay for the operations at Johnson Street. And unfortunately, we do not have state money to operate emergency shelters. And there is no federal dollars available to pay for Johnson Street. This fiscal cliff is something that we have been transparent about with our houseless service providers. It's been a conversation that we have been having for quite some time. And the public in terms of our council meetings, our council work groups, committee meetings, and then council meetings, largely related to the budget, but several times we have talked about the Johnson Street Shelter here and the reality of having one-time-only funding that is, has been paying for the operations. This was a hard decision, and yet planning the phased wind down has been quite thoughtful alongside a planned housing sprint. The phased wind down will be led by the city's Houseless Programs Department. And that will lead the effort with our community partners through a housing sprint, where we will be working to secure permanent housing solutions for neighbors who use the shelter. Those solutions may include rental housing, securing rental housing, reuniting folks with family and friends, seeking treatment or recovery housing, and other unique solutions. We are crafting the solution in real time and with, in partnership with our service providers in the community. The plan is for the city and service partners to have basically a pseudo-command, incident-command structure. And so by that, I mean that we will be in very frequent conversation on a daily or week, you know, multiple times a week, working alongside service providers as every guest of the shelter has more or less created a unique housing solution plan. And as you know, we conducted a pilot program of this effort over the holidays called Housed for the Holidays. We, we were able to house 12 of the 15 veterans that are selected for that program, homeless veterans, which is an 80% success rate. And that is largely the same exact structure we're gonna use going forward. I shouldn't say exact, same structure with the housing sprint that we are gonna be employing with the phased wind down of Johnson Street. So this effort will be housing-focused. We'll be prioritizing getting neighbors into housing solutions that meet their needs, and we'll be working to prioritize how we maintain those ongoing supports for folks once they are housed. The flexible funds that we will use to secure housing will be things like holding an apartment open, holding a unit open, paying for a security deposit, paying off rent and utilities that are in arrears, transportation to friends and family, and so much more. And securing these, our team will be doing the work of securing the rental units, document readiness, completing applications for things like vouchers, lease-up paperwork, creating personal budget tools, and a whole host of other, of other items. We, I have to say that I am incredibly, I'm incredibly pleased to see this radical common sense approach that we took over the course of the holidays to take a look at the specific needs of individuals and really lean into those items. A lot of times, this is really the reality of what a lot of folks that are living houseless are managing. It's like they have rent and arrears, and they have utility arrears, and they don't have enough money for a security deposit or first and last month's rent. The work that we've done with our technical assistance providers through the Built for Zero program, as well as the other communities that we've been learning from that have applied this approach, have found that on average, about $2,000 per person is needed for securing housing. It varies. When we did the Housed for the Holidays, those 12 veterans, some of them needed $0, and one person, for example, needed $9,000. So there's, the situation varies widely. That is how we came up with the budget of a $400,000 housing fund to assist this sprint. So during this time that we are phasing out and winding down the shelter, we encourage continued use of the shelter because we want to maintain regular touchpoints with folks. We feel like that's gonna be a real opportunity to make sure that we are actually able to deploy the housing sprint and make sure we're addressing unique needs everybody has. The wind down, the phased wind down of this, of the Johnson Street Shelter will be April 1st through August 31st. So our current contract with the Pavarello Center that operates Johnson Street is through August 31st. And we are working together to decrease and work with folks, reducing the numbers. There are about 30 people per month. And again, really working to direct those people to different housing solutions. I want to say importantly that emergency shelter will always have an important role to play in our community in ensuring that in emergencies, our neighbors without housing have a warm and safe place to seek refuge and connecting to the care that the staff who are there help meet their basic needs every day. The Pavarello Center was meeting this critical need in our community before the Johnson Street Shelter, and they will continue providing these services after it closes, as will the YWCA with their Family Housing Center and Hope Rescue Mission with the Temporary Safe Outdoor Space. I'm encouraged to have the city be able to lean into this housing-focused housing sprint because it really meets what I believe is the identified goals by our community in On Our Way Home. That's the new strategy that our community has developed for addressing homelessness. The number-one priority in our On Our Way Home is right sizing shelter. And much of that conversation was, right sizing shelter doesn't mean that you just get shelters, but more, bigger and bigger, larger, congregate shelters. But in fact, you're actually addressing the entire pipeline of need for folks that are living houseless, trying to keep people housed to begin with, and then also helping people once they secure housing. And so that has resonated certainly with, I think, a number of us asking the question, just adding emergency shelter beds, is that really where we want our resources to go? Or do we want our resources as a community to go to the solution we know that ends homelessness, which is housing? So the city will put its limited resources towards those outcomes that deliver housing solutions. And you will see more of this as we get into the FY '26 budget. You'll see more and more of the things that I believe we need to take a look at in order to support this. I do want to mention that I'm just incredibly grateful for the partners that we are working with, all of our service partners that we met with, several, what we call the houseless leaders, and many organizations that provide services, housing, healthcare, to folks that are living houseless. And the partnership and willingness to lean in and get creative and figure this out together is admirable. The United Way will play a similar role in this housing sprint that they did for the efforts in Housed for the Holidays. Again, where we tested this model. And I will just say that right away, if folks want to know how they can help, that is one way they can help today. They can contribute financially to the Johnson Street Housing Sprint. There will be a flexible fund managed by the United Way. That has been stood up as of end of last week. It's available on their website. And I saw that they already put an email out today asking for folks to contribute. So they're already actively working to raise dollars for this effort. The other thing I'll say is we give to the Pavarello Center. They have about 20 to 30 additional beds at their Broadway facility as I speak. They have all winter. And they always need support for providing the necessary services and food, socks, you know, hygiene materials that they need there. So consider giving to the Pavarello Center. The other thing I would highly encourage people to do is get involved with Missoula Interfaith Collaborative's Housing Advocate Network. This is an organization that's been around for some years now. Organizations that are providing homes for people that are both houseless, but those that are, might have housing instability. The Housing Advocate Network are everyday people that walk alongside folks to help them secure homes, to secure rental housing. As soon as we announced this phased wind down of the Johnson Street Shelter, the Missoula Interfaith Collaborative got an orientation scheduled for this Wednesday, March 12th, from 5:30 to 7:00 PM at their offices at 2205 34th Street. And they have about 100 volunteers that do this work, and they're looking to double that. And I think in my conversations with community members, like, there's a lot of people out there that could do a lot of good in that space. The last thing I will mention is that if you are a landlord and you are interested in getting involved, please contact our city houseless service program. And I'm gonna find a better way in which that you can connect with me. But for the time being, just reach out to the mayor's office, and I'll make sure you get connected to our staff. We have a lot of great landlords that already work with folks that use Section 8 vouchers, for example, or that are transitioning out of the emergency or the shelter at Metal Arc at the YWCA, for example. So we have a lot of good folks in the community that are really interested in seeing how they can partner to make this possible for folks. Next steps for the city council, I wanted, and the public, wanted you to know that our housing solutions team around this are continually developing plans with service providers on a daily basis. So like I said, we are building this plan as I speak together. We are intending to bring a council update to the March 26th committee meeting. That'll be in the Housing and Redevelopment Committee. And we're intending there to talk more about the phased wind down and associated housing sprint. And our main discussion item there will be, I'm talking about how our staffing plan is changing when it comes to enforcement by standing up our homeless response team. And so those are elements that you've budgeted for. We've put some time and thought and energy around how that can best serve folks that are living outdoors and how we can, again, get people connected to services and housing. And the last thing I'll mention is that, while this is a really challenging decision, it is one that I have taken the direction of city council's mandate or resolution to deconstruct the buildings at the Johnson Street site and the North MRL site by the fall of 2026. And because of the funding shortfall, it is time to lean into a new vision and a new way in which we're actually serving the folks living in that shelter to get them connected to services and housing. And I am incredibly optimistic about this. I'm getting a lot of feedback from the community about their optimism about this. I've had requests to sit down to talk about how people can be part of this. And so, for example, I'll be meeting with Chad Bauer, the Chamber of Commerce CEO, the week after next, to talk about how the Chamber members can support this effort. And so I'm highly encouraged. I, I want to acknowledge the challenge that this is, and the challenge that this certainly provides many people in our community. And I also want to say that I'm hopeful, and I feel very hopeful about it. And so with that, I wanted to make sure we started out the meeting with that. That was big news on Friday, a lot of conversations over the weekend. I wanted to make sure that I had that opportunity at the beginning of the meeting to, to address those items. All right. So we are now gonna move into our public hearings. We've got two public hearings this evening. And the first is an ordinance extension, which is a city interim urgency. Jen Gress is here for our staff report. And this is the city interim urgency zoning ordinance. And I will turn this over to Ms. Gress, if I see you on here. I think. Well.
Hello.
Hello.
Hello. Sorry, I was a little slow this afternoon. I apologize.
No problems.
All right. So, binding my screen to share. So, good evening. For the record, I am Jen Gress of CPDI. And tonight, we're talking about an extension to the existing ordinance that was adopted in August of, excuse me. We're, I apologize. I'm a little frazzled. We're gonna cover a second proposed 12-month extension to interim urgency ordinance 3723. And this ordinance was originally approved on October 16th of 2023 for six months and amended the zoning code by addressing legislative changes from the 2023 legislative session. During the 2023 legislative session, the state passed seven different bills that affected 15 Title 20 chapters. And these changes were made by the legislature, were due in large part to the affordable housing crisis compounded by increasing material costs and lengthy development schedules. And each bill had an effective date on or before October 1st of 2023. So in an effort to comply with the 2023 state mandates, staff proposed an interim urgency ordinance with the goal to review the current codes and develop proposed local zoning amendments. Implementing these changes with an urgency ordinance allowed the city to incorporate the state mandates as close to the effective date of the bills as possible and allowed the city time to contemplate comprehensive code reform as part of the ongoing Our Missoula Growth Policy Update and Code Reform Project. The second reading for the adoption will occur on March 24th. And on March 25th, the city council approved, excuse me, the March, I've got that out of order. On March 25th of 2024, the city council approved the first 12-month extension in the interim ordinance that will expire on March 25th. And the second reading of this adoption will occur on March 24th. And again, this request is to extend the interim ordinance. And it was advertised in the Missoulian on February 22nd. And an agency-interested party memo was distributed, and additional information was included on the Project Engage Missoula website. So as a reminder, interim urgency zoning ordinances are allowed by Montana Code Annotated, and that's Section 762306. The code permits cities to amend land use allowances without following detailed procedures otherwise required prior to the adoption of the zoning ordinance. Exceptions to the procedures include allowing an adopted interim urgency ordinance to become effective upon adoption and a reduction in the requirements for public participation and engagement. The adopted interim urgency zoning ordinance allowed for rapid alignment of our codes to protect public health and safety and welfare. It accomplished many changes, including full compliance with the 2023 state statutes, which included in part the prohibition of certain design standards and processes, as well as the reduction of parking requirements for certain uses. The proposed extension of this ordinance is for 12 months, by the end of which time the city will have adopted a reformed code through the current process of the Our Missoula Project. The interim ordinance cannot be amended as part of this extension, and it may only be approved or denied. This slide provides some background regarding changes adopted in October of 2023. First, changes explicitly allow microbreweries to co-locate with retail beer and wine sales under certain conditions. Next, the maximum number of children and adults allowed in a residential daycare was raised from 12 to 15 individuals. And the maximum for a daycare center was raised to 16. New definitions for data centers, digital asset mining, and home digital asset mining have been added. These uses are permitted outright in the M2 Heavy Industrial District and are conditionally approved in the M1 Limited Industrial District. Places of religious worship can now accommodate temporary overnight visitors not exceeding 75 days per calendar year. Changes were made to require one parking space per unit for multi-dwelling buildings in all commercial districts except the Central Business District. Parks and trails requirements within Town Home Exemption Development Standards, also known as TES, were repealed, along with noticing requirements and all references to conditions of approval. And finally, the Design Review Board was repealed. Provisions transferring Design Review authority were included, and design standards unrelated to public health and safety have been removed or revised. As staff recommends, council adopt a second 12-month extension of ordinance 3723. The extension must be confirmed by a two-thirds vote in order to be adopted. And the second reading of this ordinance, as I said, reading of this ordinance, as I said, will be on the consent agenda for the March 24th city council meeting. This is the end of my presentation. I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Gress. Appreciate that. And with that, are there any council questions in regards to what Ms. Gress has presented this evening? Not seeing any here. Not seeing any online. All righty. So it doesn't look like we have any questions from council. I think this is pretty straightforward, and folks have been through this a few times in terms of your presentation. So if I could, Councilor Nugent, do you want to read that motion for the floor?
Happy to. I wasn't quite sure since it would be the consent agenda, but yeah, I'll read it.
Yeah.
But then we don't need a vote tonight, right?
Right. Reading with the final reading is held on March 24th. That's a good point. Right.
Um, mate, it was my understanding that we would open the public hearing tonight, and then we would close the public hearing tonight, and then it would be just a second reading on the consent agenda. So I might be out of order, but that's what my understanding was.
That'll, that'll work. So we'll read it, we'll read the motion for the floor.
Perfect. Thank you.
Pursuant to Montana Municipal Interim Zoning Statute MCA 76-2-306, Missoula City Council hereby adopts an ordinance that extends for 12 months, ordinance 3723, an interim urgency zoning measure, mending Title 20 Missoula City Zoning Ordinance, Chapter 20.01 introductory provisions, Chapter 20.05 residential districts, Chapter 20.10 business and commercial districts, Chapter 20.15 industrial manufacturing districts, Chapter 20.20 open space public and aviation districts, Chapter 20.25 overlay districts, Chapter 20.40 use and building specific standards, Chapter 20.45 accessory uses and structures, Chapter 20.60 parking and access, Chapter 20.65 landscaping, Chapter 20.75 signs, Chapter 20.85 review and approval procedures, Chapter 20.90 administration, Chapter 20.1 terminology, and Chapter 20.105 use classifications to incorporate regulations concerning legislative changes to state land use regulations made in 2023.
Thank you very much. Appreciate that. Okay. Motion's on the floor. The plan tonight is to open the public hearing and close it. We'll open the public hearing by opening it up for public comment. So is there any public comment this evening on this agenda item? Okay, I'm not seeing any in the room. Come on up.
Hi. Is this working?
Yes, it is. But you can make that a little closer to your mouth. It might, there you go.
Okay, perfect. Hi, my name's Sage Bennett. My last name is spelled B-E-N-N-E-T-T. I'm really grateful tonight that we're looking into a 12-month extension of this ordinance. I am hopeful that city council will consider 12-month extensions of other projects related to affordable housing and assisting those who are housing insecure in our community, such as extending folks' ability to reside within shelters. When it comes down to closing down the Johnson Street Shelter, it is upsetting to see the impact that that will have on individuals affected by the housing crisis within Missoula, and how it will be entirely reliant on service providers to continue the efforts that they already are doing. And simply renaming that effort as a housing sprint, it feels really frustrating that this is being manipulated into a way that is...
Ms. Bennett, this is about the interim zoning ordinance. So if you'll bring it back to what the actual public hearing is about, I'd appreciate it. Thank you.
Absolutely. Yeah, I saw within this ordinance that it was discussing residential daycare, numbers of individuals who could attend daycare from 12 to 15 people. I guess I'm just curious where our consideration as the city of Missoula comes when thinking about unhoused children and those reliant on housing security through shelters that our city is no longer choosing to fund and instead allocating $1 million to the enforcement of oppressing individuals residing outside, being forced to survival camp from, and the 8:00 AM to 8:00 PM.
Bring it on back to the ordinance.
Absolutely. Yeah. There was, within this ordinance, a comment that I really questioned of the reduction in requirement for public participation and engagement. Makes me reflect a lot on the other ways in which our city has reduced public participation and engagement.
Thank you.
Especially when it comes to the issue of the Johnson Street Shelter. I worry that our city council is not open to hearing the information that the public wants to share with them about the ways in which there are ineffective housing crisis solutions that are being offered by the city.
Thank you very much for your comments. And for the public, I'll remind you, just at the beginning of the public hearing, the staff presentation did summarize that these changes are due to the change in state law. So not necessarily decisions that the city council has a room to make a different decision, but we do need to implement those locally. Any other public comment this evening? Not seeing any in the room. How about online? David Gray, can you unmute?
Am I unmuted now?
Yes, you are.
Okay. Yes, I was hoping that the council would come into a little more conformance with the legislative bill of the last session to provide more affordable housing opportunities in Missoula and specifically in the multifamily standards to remove the design requirements that have nothing to do with public health, but do increase the costs such as the long-term bike parking, glazing requirements, and front porch requirements. And then also to completely strike all design requirements of the design excellence that was added. There has been no ordinance in Missoula that hilk away more equity and made Missoula more unaffordable than the design excellence overlay. I have designed apartment buildings that had to comply with the 10-foot ceiling heights and the 50% glazing and the 30% glazing. And I have the utility bills for that building. And the interior units that did not have to provide the massive amount of glazing had a utility bill of $22 a month when the thermostat was set at 63 or 64. And the smaller unit that was 120 square foot, smaller one bedroom, that had to have the larger amount of glazing and higher ceiling heights was $98 a month. And it had less space to live in, but it had a lot more glazing, which really increased the carbon footprint, the month-to-month utility cost for the tenants, and it caused the increase in construction, which drove up the rents for all tenants. It would be great to have that, those rules removed, so we could have more affordable, attainable, and equitable housing in Missoula. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gray. Any other public comment online? Hmm, okay. Not seeing any. Do, 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 just double check here. I'm not seeing any additional public comment. No additional public comment in the room on this agenda item. Then that wraps up our public hearing for this agenda item. And now we'll move on to council comments related to the ordinance. And Councilor Jordan?
Thank you. I'm just wondering if it's possible to have Ms. Gress's presentation either attached to the agenda or sent to city council, because it was very informative and I'd like to look at it a little bit more closely.
Yeah, absolutely. And Ms. Gress, did you hear that request from Councilor Jordan?
I did. Thank you.
Great. We'll make sure we get that out. Thank you very much. Councilor Nugent?
Thank you, Ms. Davis. I think that that might be attached to the last LUP meeting, but I could be wrong about that. So we'll get that attached. I wanted to speak to Mr. Gray's comments. Your emails have been shared with our consultant team and our staff, obviously. My understanding is that we are not able to make substantive amendments to the emergency ordinance without having to start the whole process over. And the emergency ordinance is only designed to carry us through code reform, which is coming at us fast and will be a large conversation of the next two quarters. So everybody, look forward to it. So some of those changes, I think, are very valid and warrant further discussion and consideration. I just don't believe we're able to do them tonight because it's, we're extending the emergency ordinance, but I could be wrong about that.
I do believe that is the case. I'm going to look to, yes, I'm seeing a head nod from Jen Gress. Thank you for that clarification. Appreciate that. Are there any other council comments before we go to a vote? Not seeing any then. Ms. Trimble, we'll do a roll call vote on this item, please.
We are going to vote on the 24th.
We're just setting the public hearing. Oh, I'm sorry. We're just setting the hearing for the 24th. Is that right?
No, it, it, it's kind of out of order, but it's going to go on the consent agenda. This was the public hearing, but it will go on the consent agenda to be voted on on the next city council meeting.
Okay. And that will be, will that be an additional, that will be a consent agenda on the 24th, correct?
Yeah, unless somebody splits it off.
Okay, great. So we are not looking for a vote this evening. My apologies. I was going through my public hearing checklist. All right. That wraps up that item. We'll move on to 5.2, which is the West End Homes Phase 2 and 3. Thank you, Ms. Gress, by the way. West End Homes Phase 2 and 3 Development Review. And Tara Porcari is here to present that for us from staff.
Thanks, Mayor Davis. Let me share this quick. Hi there. Tara Porcari, planner with CDPI. As mentioned today, I'll be presenting quickly on staff's report on the phased development review for West End Homes subdivision, Phases 2 and 3. There's no new information available since the Phase 1 development review, so this should all be pretty quick tonight. As a refresher, for any of you that don't remember, this is the subdivision just north of Hellgate Elementary. It's located northwest of the intersection of England Boulevard and Flynn Lane. Further north is also the Icon Apartment Homes Development and Sapphire subdivisions. Aerial imagery here is obviously a little bit outdated, but the roadway for England Boulevard is now installed through the subdivision property with some of the lots in Phase 1 on the west side of the subdivision already being developed. So just an update there. Here's the approved phasing plan. Phases 2 and 3 shown in light green and light blue between England Boulevard and Burnett Drive on the east side of the subdivision. As you can see here on the slide, Phase 2 includes 23 lots, mostly fronting England Boulevard and 1.28 acres of parkland on its northwest corner, while Phase 3 includes 18 lots, mostly fronting Burnett Drive, and no parkland. With the phased development application for Phases 2 and 3, there's no changes to the phasing plan since the Phase 1 approval, which basically updated the original approval to show Flynn Lane being improved with each adjacent phase. Then here's the approved master site plan, which shows that all Phase 2 and 3 lots are zone T3 neighborhood edge, except for the small portion, of course, of the OS open space at the northwest where that park is. And just a reminder to everyone, this entire area is all currently zoned under the Sutupkane Form Based Code, not Title 20. So again, no new information is being introduced with the Phase 2 and 3 submittal. So now just some process information. You've been through this once before for this subdivision in particular, but as a refresher, phased development review is mandated by state law and requires city council to hold a public hearing prior to the approval of any final plat. In this review, the goal is basically just to determine if there are any changes to the review criteria or any new information which would result in, you know, a significant impact that wasn't known at the time of the preliminary plat approval. So if these circumstances did exist, city council is able to apply new conditions or amend existing conditions. Council can choose to approve the phased development with some or all of these recommendations, but it cannot be denied. So the preliminary plat was approved on January 9th of 2023. Since then, state and local law did change. Some of you might remember this. So that this process is no longer required for phases plat within five years of preliminary plat approval. However, the subdivision does need to follow the laws in place at the time it was deemed sufficient for preliminary plat review, so it's still required. Then, again, just process-wise, once the phased development review is approved, the applicant may submit for final plat approval, which basically just ensures that their submittal meets the existing conditions as well as those that may result from this phased development review process. The city's subdivision regulations include review of the following impacts from any proposed subdivision. Anyone on council has seen this before. These are the categories you'll find within the staff report and are all the same categories previously addressed with the approval of the preliminary plat. Again, there are no new updates for Phases 2 or 3 since the last approval for Phase 1. And if you remember back a ways to 2023, when Phase 1 came in, all of those updates were related to see impact on local services. That's all in the staff report. But nothing new for 2 and 3. Just emphasizing that again. And, one. Finally, we haven't received any requested changes or notification of new conditions for the site from the applicant. We haven't received any comments or concerns from our agency contacts, and we have not received any public comment for either phase at this time. So our phased development review process has a 30-day review deadline. Our deadline for this one lands this Wednesday, March 12th. So without a decision, does need to be made tonight, because it's the last city council before that date. So you'll see staff's recommended motion for approval up on the slide. That should be everything. I believe we've got somebody here from IMAG. Any other questions for staff? We can open it up.
Great. Thank you, Ms. Porcari. Anybody from IMAG wanting to add to the presentation or? No need to, just want to make sure that you have the opportunity to do that. Not hearing any then. We'll move on to, oh. Did I hear something? No. Okay. Questions from council? Any questions from council members? Not seeing any in the room. Any online? All righty. Not seeing any questions, then we'll take the main motion. Councilor Nugent?
Thank you, Mayor Davis. I move city council approve the phased development review of West End Homes subdivision Phases 2 and 3, located northwest of the intersection of Flynn Lane and England Boulevard, based on the findings of fact and conclusions of law in the staff report, subject to the conditions of approval as amended by city council through phased development review.
Excellent. Thank you very much. The motion is made. This opens the public hearing, and we'll open it up to public comment for the West End Homes Phase 2 and 3 Development Review. Any public comment on this agenda item? Okay, I'm not seeing any here in the room. Come on up.
Hi, my name is Sage Bennett. Last name is spelled B-E-N-N-E-T-T. I like that within this, it talks about how city council is able to apply new conditions or apply amendments to continue to fix and work on the things that don't work within this plan. It makes me curious to know if city council would be able to do the same thing and apply new conditions or apply amendments to other policies and plans that they have in place for the unhoused individuals within our community, particularly when it comes to removing the Johnson Street Shelter and taking away very necessary... Within this plan for West End Farms, there's a discussion, and it talked about how in phase one, it considered the impact on local services within the community. I really appreciated this because it is important that whenever we enforce something within Missoula, that we think about the impact that it has not only on our community, on the individuals who are trying to survive in this housing crisis that we have in Missoula, but also on the impact that it has to local providers in our area, which makes me think of the local providers who will feel overworked and underpaid like they already are when having to impose this housing sprint without assistance of guaranteed funding from the city of Missoula such as...
Ms. Bennett, I don't believe the housing sprint has anything to do with West End Farms. Please bring it on back. Thank you.
Absolutely. Thank you so much.
Oh, you're welcome.
I loved how they talked about at the end how you haven't received any requests for changes or comments and concerns from agencies about this plan, as well as any public comments on it. I think that can oftentimes be a really good sign about a plan that is agreed upon within the community, which is unfortunate when it comes to other plans that our city is working on, such as the defunding of the Johnson Street Shelter. It's concerning that this is something that is affecting so many service providers, so many members of our public, and will result in an increased amount of individuals who continue to struggle to find housing and remain unhoused in our community. I urge you to consider the guidance that is provided from service providers, from the public.
Thank you very much for your comments, Ms. Bennett.
Absolutely.
Again, remember, let's keep these to the agenda item, folks. Does anybody have a public comment on West End Farms? Not seeing any in the room? Do we have any online? Okay, not seeing any online. That wraps up our public comment and our public hearing on this agenda item. We'll bring it back to city council to see if anybody has any comments before we take a vote? Any comments? All right. Not seeing any in the room, and I'm not seeing any online. So Ms. Trimble, we'll take a roll call vote on this agenda item, please.
All right. Voting to approve the phase development review of West End Homes subdivision phases two and three, beginning with Anderson.
Yes.
Ms. Sarah.
Yes.
Campbell.
Yes.
Clino.
Yes.
Farmer.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Jordan.
Yes.
Nelson.
Yes.
Nugent.
Yes.
Savage.
Yes.
Cheryl.
Yes.
And Vasique.
Yes.
That's 12 in favor, none opposed.
All right. Thank you very much, Ms. Trimble. That item passes. We are, that concludes our public hearings for the evening. We do not have any new business. We'll move on to the consent agenda. We only have three items on the consent agenda. So Ms. Trimble, if you'll bring those up on screen and go ahead and read those aloud for the public and for council, we'll get underway.
All right. On this evening's consent agenda, we have a motion to approve accounts table or claims for checks dated March 11th, 2025 in the amount of $875,621.39. We have a motion awarding the bid for Milton Howell Phillips Water Main Replacement Project to RLC Enterprise at a cost not to exceed $1,162,587.73 and to authorize the return of bid bonds. A final motion for this evening is for the council to approve and authorize the mayor to sign the professional services amendment number two with D J and A for the Grand Creek Realignment Project at a cost not to exceed $99,690.
Great, Ms. Trimble, thank you very much. All right, we'll move on to public comment on items listed in the consent agenda. Anybody interested in making comment on the consent agenda is welcome to come up now. Not seeing any in the room? How about online? Any public comment on the consent agenda tonight? Okay, not seeing any, any items requested to be separated by council members? All right, not seeing any then. We could do a voice vote on the consent agenda, please.
All right. Voting on this evening's consent agenda, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. And any opposed? All right, that's unanimous.
Okay, thank you very much. We don't have any items under our regular business this evening, and so next item is our state legislature update, and we have Mr. Bickel here this evening to provide that update.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Dale Bickel, Chief Administrative Officer, standing in for Jessica Miller, who normally provides these updates to you. She is taking a well-deserved transmittal break, along with our legislators who have a few days off until the legislature reconvenes on Friday. I want to take the opportunity to thank our local delegation for all the work they're doing in Helena. I don't know how you do it. So our plan is, I'm going to provide a short update on some of the bills that just happened, acted on last week, and then when Jessica is back at our next council meeting update, she'll give a more comprehensive update on where we stand related to the city's priorities at the legislature. So with that, in the literally hundreds of bills that were acted on in the last few days of the legislature, I'm going to highlight five that have, that were acted on. And if there are any other bills that you have questions on, you can ask me, and I will find out the answer later because I probably don't know it. So first off, SB 204, if you remember, it was a sunset on all voter legislative initiatives. It was killed on third reading, after a lot of legislative maneuvering to try to get this bill passed. It was a very, it would have been a very difficult for not only, I mean, not only the city, but for a lot of our local government partners here. Currently with that, SB 205, which created voter turnout requirements for certain ballot initiatives, was also, also not passed. And SB 254, which would have prevented local governments from public lobbying with lobbyists, also was not passed. A couple of bills in the other category that are going to be transmitted from the Senate to the House include SB 420, which limits fees we are able to charge for certain services in our parks. And while that sounds good, what it does is that it means that the taxpayers will have to subsidize certain activities more than a lot of our fee-associated activities. And then SB 133, also passed, which is an impact fee bill that will eliminate our park and general services impact fees. And again, one of those things that will, you know, one, prevent us from doing, you know, more types of the facilities that we have, but also at the times when we do have those necessary improvements, they will be paid by our general taxpayers rather than the new development that costs those. So we'll be continuing to work on those bills in the House. So that's my update for this evening, and happy to ask, answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Bickel. Any questions this evening from council? Not seeing any? All right. Well, you did quite a thorough review for us. Mr. Bickel, no questions. Thank you very much. And yes, good for Ms. Miller. She's having a much deserved break. It's good. I too just want to echo my appreciation for our legislative delegation in Helena. It's a heck of a lot of work, and I hope folks are resting, resting right now. Okay. On the legislature, of course, yeah, absolutely, you bet.
Oh, thanks. I didn't know, called it. I really appreciate Dale walking this through, and obviously Jessica, for all the work that she's been doing tracking this. It's insane what's gone, all the number of bills. But I really am concerned about the number of bills that are coming that are really meant to limit the autonomy of local government, and especially in regards to impact fees and park fees. And I just am frustrated because I think that there is a lack of understanding of the long-term implications of what these bills would actually do and the effect it would have on the larger community. The parks fees, for example, especially since one of our own legislators was advocating for this, you know, basically says that high utilizers, you know, leagues and things have to pay a little bit more of a fee. And we talk about that every year when we talk about parks fees. But, you know, they want it at a certain level of striping, a certain level of sod kept up, and so that they can play tournaments. They can basically reserve the fields a year out for a tournament. And so that basically necessitates more work, and therefore they offset that additional work that they require by a fee. And so that, you know, there are still plenty of other opportunities for people at all socioeconomic levels to participate and utilize our parks, but these particular user groups have an, you know, not your average use of these parks, and so therefore they're having to pay an additional fee, which I think is truly fair. If you want something extra for, you know, versus just what the base level would be, you know, it does make sense to pay a little bit extra. And my understanding from when we especially did the Fort Missoula Regional Park Bond and really engaged in a broad community discussion before that, that was one of the agreements that was made with a lot of those user groups, that, you know, we're going to build this amazing park, and it's going to be utilized for a lot of things, but if you want the extra additional amenities, that, you know, there's going to be an associated cost. And so it's really frustrating because as Dale said in his presentation, that by lowering these impact fees, either are we going to not have those tournaments? Are those leagues not going to play here? This larger economic impact that, you know, big, large tournaments have on our broader community, are we going to lose out on that? Just because I think that there is this sense in the legislature that municipalities have run amok and would invite any of them to join us for our budget season this summer to see where that actually is not the case. So just wanted to bring that to the public's attention, especially since legislators are home right now. For the most part, they are doing a great job. There are some folks who I would really appreciate if they came and spent a year or so and municipal government to really understand how it all interacts and how, and interrelates and how the, you know, there's the party of small government, but I think it's now government, small enough government that they can control. So, thanks, Madam Mayor.
Absolutely. Councilwoman Anderson, thank you for expanding on that. That's a, yeah, it's a particularly challenging situation right now with managing the demands of, demands on local government with the constant restraints that come from pieces of legislation. All right. That wraps up, I think, any other public comment, or excuse me, council questions? Comment on legislation? Okay, thank you. All right, we will now move on to public comment on non-agenda items. We'll allow three minutes per public commenter. If you'll say your name for the record, please, and I'll go ahead and help you keep track of time. We'll start with folks in the room. Public comment on non-agenda items this evening.
Hi, my name is Sage Bennett. My last name is spelled B-E-N-N-E-T-T. I just wanted to start off tonight by saying that it has been mentioned that this is a federal and state issue when it comes to Missoula being unable to provide the money necessary to continue funding the Johnson Street Shelter. I'm wondering if the city will consider reallocating the $1 million that was put into enforcing the 12.6 ordinance, which oppresses individuals who are unhoused and as a form of poverty being criminalized due to enforcing fines that individuals are unable to pay without jeopardizing their attempts to obtain stable housing. If these $1 million being spent to oppress unhoused individuals was instead allocated to assisting in this housing sprint and helping individuals obtain stable housing, I think that would be a much better use of the finances within Missoula. We need a long-term plan, and this housing sprint is just, is not only just a short-term plan, but also really truly only a concept of a plan. We need the city to remain accountable to providing what is promised to our community members. There were many promises that were made during the discussion of the Amendment 12.6, such as an increased public restrooms and trash disposals that were not followed through on. I'm incredibly worried about the accountability that will be applied to this housing sprint when neither Ward Six City Council members, the ward in which Johnson Street Shelter resides, were present at the press conference where the announcement of the closing of Johnson Street Shelter was made. I worry about the honesty, transparency, and accountability of city council when you make a housing sprint plan sound like it will be effective and easy to accomplish, just like how the Housed for the Holidays program. However, while this program, Housed for the Holidays, was enacted, I wonder how many unhoused individuals were still oppressed by our city. I'm willing to bet everything I own that it was more than 12. And by oppressed by our city, I mean the lack of concern around the health and safety of those forced to survive outside. I mean, the $500 fees individuals are given when it comes to being in a park after hours. If this truly is to be enacted and we are to no longer have the Johnson Street Shelter, I urge you to consider dropping the eight-to-eight ban and considering dropping the 12.6 ordinance. This housing sprint will result in service providers continuing to be overworked and underpaid, and even more so during this housing sprint, in which they will have an increased perception of whether or not they are accomplishing the goals that they are hoping to have accomplished in the housing sprint. I am worried that this housing sprint will change nothing about the current state of affairs of affordable housing advocacy being done in Missoula.
Thank you, Ms. Bennett. We wrapped at three.
It simply redames the process. Absolutely. Thank you.
Thank you. Other public comment on items not on the agenda, please.
Hi, Chloe Carlson, CAR, LSOLN. I got four questions tonight. Last year during the mayor's budget presentation, she said there was...
I'm sorry, I can't hear you. Can you speak closer to the mic? Yeah, sorry, we can't hear you.
Last year during the mayor's budget presentation, she allocated $365,000 for required services programs for safe urban camping. Wondering where all that went? Like, I saw some bathrooms for a bit, but there's no bathrooms. As a person who uses injectable medication, I require Sharp's Concealer to dispose my needles safely. Those don't exist. There's no named places for camping. You know, all those things, I had the ACLU send me that letter on back last fall. I'd like to point out that during your big housing push for the veterans, the police came to my camp, assaulted and tortured me with a taser, legally searched my tent. I'm a veteran, so that was going on during this back in December. I'm curious about the coordinated entry. It's essentially just oppression Olympics. Are the same tactics for housing people going to be applied during this housing sprint? This coordinated entry seems to only serve the top 20 people over and over again. People that have been on there for years haven't even had a chance yet. There's about 100 people on the streets, so is the housing sprint only for the people in the shelter, or can it be open up to the people on the streets still? And I'd also like to point out that the old version of the ordinance is still on the urban camping website from the city.
Thank you very much, Mr. Carlson. Other public comment this evening?
Big K Montana. I just love the quote from Irma Bamba. It's so grandiose to have pipe trees. How is it going to smoke, dear? And where is the smoke going to end up at? I don't think you're getting enough rhetoric from the people that actually do the numbers at the Pavarino. Things are not adding up with some of these people that are getting the insect tract that you're not in on. And I know that specifically. I hear a lot of talk of this... I hear a lot of talk of this couple individuals, one specific way that should be realized more appropriately. Needles is a problem that contributes problem to housing, especially at the wonderful oasis that's called the Johnson Center and the Pavarello, which is minimized because the acceptance of the problems of the needles that contributed to more problems. Alcohol is one thing, but needles are another. But alcohol and the visible spirit that's so well managed by a few that's not, that is under control. Where are the alcoholics that I had problems with at the Pavarello that got advocated for that threatened my life? I think they're at the Johnson Center, they're not the Pavarello. And I've got circumstances developing at the Pavarello that are questionable that had been related by phone to Jill and Bob, Claire Bob, and the Human Resources. If it goes any further, 911 will be called and I will take it into court. But the whole two and a half years of wonderful emails I had with them, we advocate the malicious intended people that creates problems at the Pavarello, which is not much, or the Johnson Center more so. I heard that wonderful delicious word that I put on the brain disease of a homeless. I wouldn't call 911, so it got recorded and documented, whether it was interviewed on the individual and that delicious homeless disease of the rotting brain. I won't use the word here, but when I'm out in public, I love to use those hateful words, that N-word that's equivalent to the C-word.
Thank you, Mr. Spitzmacher. We have three minutes. I appreciate your comments this evening.
And I've got one thing to say. I'm on my 20-year anniversary of being homeless. Wonderful being homeless in Seattle throughout up and down through the last 20 years. Nothing's changed.
Thank you, Mr. Spitzmacher. All right. Anybody else for public comment this evening? Come on up, please.
I'm Robert Dunlap, I'm in the 2013 West Kent here in Missoula. I'm here because Chief Coller asked me to be here. Recently, I did the city Missoula's Police Familiarization Course, started in January and ended last week. It gave me and about 29 other people an idea what a policeman or policewoman, police officer has to do. One of the last things I did was ride along with Officer Tim and I spent the entire shift with him. And it gave me an appreciation of what we ask and what we expect these people to do. So I'll try to recall that shift as best I can. It started out with the welfare call, checking on a small child. Immediately after that, we went on a suicide call. Then after that, we went over to the Pavarello to track down a girl that had done some shoplifting. That required a little bit of research, checking out a car. And then we determined where that individual was and we had to get a search warrant. So if you go by a police car and you see the officer seemingly doing nothing, they're probably typing out something on that to get a search warrant. The victim was finally, or the person finally came out of their living place. They were, I went with them to jail and I got to go in the jail. I've never been in there before. The sheriff's department was very kind, gave me a tour of the men's department. I made sure I didn't stare at anybody in the eye. And this place you wouldn't want to go. And we came out of there. We checked another car that might have been stolen. We went back, that person happened to be living in a truck, so we had the truck towed. Then all of a sudden, we had an emergency call back over to the railroad park where a person had quit breathing. And Officer Tim immediately without thinking, oh, I don't want to touch this person, got down and started first aid care. My type, the final episode, thanks to Councilman Campbell and Officer Ryan, I got to see somebody tased. That was kind of unnerving. So I'll end with what I learned. One, if you're going to commit a crime, don't use your cellphone or your laptop. Two, an attorney with a briefcase can steal more money than 10 men with guns. No, that's, I learned that from a patrol. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Dunlap. I'm glad to know that it was instructional. It's a great program. Any other members of the public wishing to make comment this evening on items not on the agenda? Not seeing any in the room? How about online? All right. Not seeing any online. That wraps up our public comment on items not on the agenda. I am going to go ahead and reserve my mayor's comments for after council comments this evening. I talked quite a bit at the beginning of the meeting.
So I'm going to go ahead and start with council comments this evening. And I know that Counselor Vaseka, you are online. I'm going to go ahead and start with you.
Thank you. I am very happy that Mr. Dunlap was able to do the Citizens Law Enforcement Academy. I did that my first year on council and it was very eye-opening. I wasn't able to see anybody tased, so I still haven't seen that happen, but it's very eye-opening for the public to see behind the scenes on what the officers do. And I would encourage anybody to do it next time it is offered. I also wanted to remind folks that we don't have council next week due to spring break. And I also learned last week that Missoula, I know winter is over now, but I just recently learned that we have a Snow Angel program that people with disabilities or seniors can sign up to have their driveway shoveled for volunteers. So if volunteers want to sign up for that, you can, or to like adopt, essentially adopt a senior or disabled person's driveway for the winter. You can also do it on a substitution basis, so you don't have to do it all the time. You can contact Missoula Aging Services for that or go to volunteermissoula.org. And I think that is the last of my comments. Oh, and see through the Missoula Aging Services, if you also need help with other outside yard chores, you can also sign up for help through the Missoula Aging Services with that too. So thank you. I'm all finished.
That's awesome. Thank you very much for your comments. Counselor Vaseka? I want to just wander around the room here. Counselor Campbell?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'll pass tonight.
Okay, thank you. Hey, Counselor Jordan?
Thank you, I'll pass tonight.
Thank you. And Counselor Cheryl?
Yeah, thanks. I just want to add a couple of things to what you had said earlier, Mayor. I want to thank the staff and the mayor for working to figure out a solution to this budgetary issue that we have that will, I believe, in the end, house more people. I also want to thank our partners and for their service to the most vulnerable members of our community and their help in the implementation of this plan. The bottom line is that we do not have the money to keep the Johnson Street Shelter open. We've been transparent about this and everyone around this horseshoe has known that the shelter's primary funding was through the Federal American Rescue Plan Act, ARPA funds. We do the acronym a lot, which was COVID money that would be spent at the end of this fiscal year. In addition to this, it's become apparent over the years that Congress shelters do not move people forward. The National Coalition for the Homeless has been advocating for finding new models and approaches. I believe that a new approach is exactly what the mayor is proposing here. I'm nervous. I'm nervous about it, to be honest. I'm also hopeful. I want people housed. I want people in treatment. I want people moving forward in their lives. Focusing on finding people housing is the best for our community and for those experiencing the crisis of living unsheltered. Housing first means investing and getting people into housing and investing and keeping them there. Government is always criticized or maybe not always, but regularly criticized for moving too slowly, not responding quickly enough to a changing landscape. I think this is an example of government reacting swiftly to the reality by saying, we don't have the money, it's not working, we're going to change the model. We're going to stop following plans that are outdated and we're going to try something new. I will tell you that this is not going to be perfect or go smoothly at all times. We're going to collect data, we're going to analyze it, we're going to learn from it, and we're going to realign our work. Our focus will not be on what Instagram or Twitter are saying, but on how many people we are getting into housing and what we can do to keep them there. I urge everyone here and everyone that comes to our meetings to please watch the regular updates and presentations that will be in our housing committee, as the mayor had stated. Those will be starting the first Wednesday after spring break on March 26th. We will not be, have started the graduated approach yet, but you will be able to get more information on it then. So I really urge people to stay in touch with that, which, where you can get the real information on how things are going. And both our successes and our failures, and there's going to be some of both. I mean, that's the reality of the world. You know, I, I think one of the problems with government sometimes is that we don't change course, that we decide on something, we vote on something, and we are not necessarily reflective of mistakes or needing to change or looking at innovative new models. We don't operate that way. And I, I think that we need to change that. I think we need to be a little more nimble in government and respond to needs, and I'm hoping that's what this is going to do. Let's see, you know, in the end though, this is, this is not, it's probably just the heating or something.
I think it might be, yeah.
That's okay. I've got a microphone, it's fine. In the end though, this is not a council action. This is an executive decision and ultimately a budgetary necessity. Although the council by resolution committed to close the shelter by next year anyway, the bottom line is there is no money. And even if there was, this type of sheltering is not even the preferred model by national advocacy organizations. As I said, I'm nervous. I think a lot of us are, but I'm also hopeful. And I'm thankful that we have an amazing and dedicated staff. I am thankful that we have a mayor that is bold enough to try something new. I realize your hand was forced as well, but try something new we will. And a mayor that has spent her life in the affordable housing world. So it's also the right person to do it. I appreciate that. I know that this has been your passion throughout your life, and I know that you are positioned well to work to make this, this housing sprint a reality if anyone is. So I appreciate that. On another note, I just, I want to again send my condolences to the Ehrlich family and the loved ones. And, and I was really hoping that fire and police would be able to ultimately find her. I'm sorry that a citizen had to. But for the family and the loved ones, I hope if nothing else that this will give them some type of closure.
Thanks. Thank you. Thank you, President Cheryl. Appreciate your comments. Thank you. Sorry about that noise, folks. I do think it's the HVAC system. We'll live with it here. Counselor Anderson?
The aliens are coming for us. No. Thanks so much, Madam Chair. Thank you, or Madam Mayor, and thank you to President Cheryl for your comments. I think you summed it up very well, and I just also want to, you know, give my thanks to the mayor and the staff. And I know it's going to be a big lift, and it was a pilot project over the holidays, and this is going to be, you know, leaning in heavily by a variety of staff members in various departments, along with the partners we have in the community. A special thanks to Susan H. Patrick at Missoula United Way and for Jill Bonney at the Pavarello Center and a whole bunch of host of other folks that I, on the spot, am not remembering. But, you know, it's going to take all of us working together to make this happen. And I think that as Ms. Cheryl pointed out, best practices, you know, the Congress shelter is not, you know, the best, you know, the gold standard. And no city in America has figured out the houseless crisis solution. And, but it's an iterative process, and I think that, as I said last week, that it takes real leadership to recognize when we're doing something that's not working and being willing to recognize that and pivot and try something new with new data that is constantly coming in. So I, there is, we are going to need partners in the community, as you stated in the beginning of your statements, but also folks to be able to contribute to the housing, okay, need an assist on the fund at the United Way, Housing Solutions Fund. Because that not only is going to help with the sprint, but it's an ongoing fund that has been around for many years, that has helped keep people in housing, which is, you know, the goal is to get and keep people in housing. And this Housing Solutions Fund has helped folks when they've, you know, have found themselves in a place where they just need a little bit of a bridge or a little extra money because of, you know, life circumstances to be able to keep their housing. So that is a need right now and then an ongoing need as well. So final comment on a different topic. Last Thursday, I, myself and Councilmember Nugent, attended the rookie graduation for the first class of new Missoula firefighters who just completed their academy. These were firefighters who were hired last year as a part of the levy being passed by the community, and I had the privilege of sitting in on their interviews in September and whittling down the list, and they got through their first 90 days and they all will be out on shifts on trucks starting this weekend or this last weekend. So Missoulians will start to see the immediate results of that levy passage with those folks out there serving their community. And they're a, a real fine bunch of individuals and public servants, and they all bring a passion to this community and the fire service and public service, especially given the fact that majority of, you know, fire calls are not the exciting things you see on Backdraft, but helping folks with a lift assist or, you know, smoke alarm going off in the middle of the night. And it's really the kind of, you know, compassion that sets these folks apart. And we just interviewed for the second round of 11 that are going to be joining the first 10 to bring us total of 21 new hires. And those folks start on March 24th and they'll do 90 Days Academy and then they will do their probationary period out on, out on shift. So again, just a huge thank you to the, to the Missoula community for supporting Missoula Fire Department. These folks do incredible work and they are truly dedicated to serving folks. And they are often the one running in the direction of danger when most normal people are running away. And it takes a truly special person to be able to do that. We are very lucky here in Missoula that we attract such high-quality folks who are willing to serve their community in the fire service. So just wanted to call that out. Thanks.
Nice. Thank you for your comments, Counselor Anderson. Thank you very much. We'll next move on to Counselor Carleeno.
Thanks.
Thanks. I guess I'll just briefly comment on the announcement of the city defunding our portion of the Johnson Street Shelter moving forward. You know, this is a topic that's come up at City Council year after year with attempts from council members to defund this shelter. And I've always been confident that, you know, Missoula is a community that cares about providing that resource, that can be a way for death for people that are in the most vulnerable situation in our community. And I've been confident that the majority of council was going to vote in favor of funding it every year. So I was shocked to, you know, see so many council members advocating for pulling that funding in the future. I think it is going to overall be a big harm to the community. I do applaud the Housing Solutions Fund that the city has and all the efforts from people at the Pavarello Center, who have been, you know, upholding Johnson Street Shelter this whole time and driving so many in our community. But I do think it's a big loss that's going to lead to a lot of damage in Missoula. And I just, it's not the way that Missoula government used to be run, where I was very confident that we would have funding for the shelter and make sure that we fit it into our budget. So I guess I just want to show disappointment for it now and, you know, do what we can to get all these people into housing before it closes. But to close it with no suitable alternatives for all those people is a huge mistake. And I really think that it's a big part of what government should be doing is making sure that we have places for people to lay their head at night, and we shouldn't be reliant on the nonprofit sector to do something that ultimately I think the government should step up and do in as a basic service. So I just wanted to show that I don't agree with the decision, and I'd be happy to join city council members who would like to still fund the shelter if we have that majority. I know we have had that majority every year in the last few years when this has come up, but perhaps that has changed. Thanks.
Thank you, Counselor Carleño. Counselor Jones?
Thanks. First of all, I also just wanted to acknowledge the young woman who drowned in the river, Danette Ehrlich, and our condolences to her family. It's just such a sad, sad situation. I know that, as Counselor Sherrill referenced, they did find her body in the river, and I hope that helps the family in terms of knowing what happened. But I just also want the family to know and her friends that this community really feels for that entire situation, and our heart goes out to them. Thank you for your comments, Mayor, on the Johnson Street Shelter and the planned closure ultimately at the end of August. I want to point out that the pandemic started six years ago this spring, and that shelter was set up as an emergency shelter to address the ramifications that came out of the pandemic. And it's, I think we've all been struggling with what are we going to do in the long run here? So having staff and the mayor collaborate and really lead on this to come up with the next phase, I'm just very appreciative of that because I think it's clear financially, we just can't do it anymore. It's not an option, and we need to figure out how to help as many folks as possible. And as you referenced, right sizing our shelter beds in terms of, we have a wonderful resource, the Pavarello and the Meadowlark, the temporary safe outdoor shelter. We've got some really good resources. We have to make those existing resources work in our community. And I think it's been a pretty, well, it's always been very transparent that the Johnson Street Emergency Shelter was tipped up as an emergency shelter. So we know that it's going to come to an end. I also just want to reiterate, I think it's super important that this community understand this is a community-wide issue, and it's going to take the community effort to really push this forward. And as I've talked to people for years now, there is always a what can we do to help? There's that message. And I think there's, we're now in a position to have a really specific ask of the community. This community can help with this situation to get these folks housed. Number one, United Ways tipping up the Housing Solutions Fund to encompass the housing sprint finances. Donate to the United Way. This is how this community can help. Second, they can get involved, to say it again, with the Missoula Interfaith Collaborative to be helping facilitate these situations on the ground. Third, we are looking for landlords who are willing to work with these situations and these folks and make the equations work. So if there are landlords who can step up, that is really helpful. And then finally, I just want to reiterate that we need to continue supporting the ongoing work of the Pavarello, the Meadowlark, and the YWCA, the Temporary Safe Outdoor Shelter through Hope Rescue Mission. These are crucial nonprofits. They always have really tight margins. That's the reality of that world. So we need to continue supporting them in this community with our dollars as well as our charitable giving, as well as making this housing sprint work. So I just want to put those specifics out there again because that is going to be a huge component of making this work. Thank you.
Excellent. Thank you, Counselor Jones. Counselor Savage?
Thank you. Yeah, I just wanted to say that I am really grateful for the mayor's leadership in identifying a clear path forward for how those folks in our community to become housed. It should come as no surprise to anyone that's been following this issue that the city does not have the funds to continue to operate the Johnson Street Shelter, nor should it come as a surprise that putting our limited resources into a shelter that was meant to be an emergency solution during the pandemic isn't working to get people housed. The mayor's plan, combined with service provider and community support, will move people into housing. And we all know that secure, permanent housing is the answer to this question of how do we address houselessness that has confounded our community for some time now. And I guess I would just like to add that I've been on council for three years, I think. I think we're coming up on four, something like that. And when I first got on council, I naively said, "Well, what's our plan for houselessness?" You know, "What's our plan?" And I've asked every mayor we've had since then, and you're the only one that frankly has brought solutions to the table. And so I just really appreciate that. And I appreciate that you have just shown, you know, great leadership in this realm. So thank you. Appreciate that.
Appreciate that very much. Thank you. Counselor Farmer?
Thank you. I agree with many of my colleagues' comments tonight, so I won't be repetitive. But I also am really looking forward to some updates on the housing sprint and look forward to seeing how our community rallies together. I will make a friendly reminder to folks on a different note that now with daylight savings, it's, there's a lot of tired people driving around in the morning. And I know there was an incident on the north side between a car and a child. Luckily, everyone is okay. But I just want to remind everyone that there's tired kids walking on the streets right now. They have to get the bus at 6:30 in the morning. And I know we're all tired, but just, I tell my kids, keep their head on a swivel. So that goes for the adults as well, driving around. So just be extra careful as we all adjust.
Appreciate that. Thank you. Counselor Becerra?
Thank you. I too want to extend my condolences to the Ehrlich family. I think as a mother and a pet owner, I've been thinking a lot about this situation. I can only imagine what the challenge that they're going through right now. So my sincere condolences. In terms of the Johnson Street Shelter facing out, I understand that this is a very difficult and challenging decision to make. And I appreciate the collaboration behind this decision. City administration and staff, service providers, and the faith community coming together to strategize the best way possible to use the very limited resources we have to address houselessness in Missoula. I have been in council for a long time, and I have always known that the Johnson Street Shelter was never intended to be a permanent solution. And while a shelter provides temporary safety to those who need it, best practices around the country and the world, actually, guide communities to focus and strive for a housing-first approach. And I believe that this is where our limited resources should go if we want to see more permanent results that help our unhoused community. I do want to thank the Pavarello and their staff for all the work that they have done at the Johnson Street Shelter. And I do hope that they can be an integral part of helping with and during the housing sprint. I also want to thank the United Way of Missoula County for stepping up and helping the city and the county meet this challenge. My gratitude to the faith community for helping provide that emergency shelter safety net that we know we're going to need. And thank you, Mayor, for taking the bold but very necessary step. As Ms. Jones mentioned, I have also always thought that this is a community issue, and I am glad to see the community stepping up in this new endeavor. So, thanks.
Thank you. Thanks for your comments. Counselor Nelson?
Yeah, thanks, Mayor Davis. I just want to echo my colleagues' comments on Johnson Street. You know, the Shelter Sunset brings a challenging transition. But I think the mayor has articulated a really good plan and a commitment to ensuring that every neighbor that's impacted continues to have access to service providers and resources and a pathway to stability. So I really appreciate that long-term, housing-focused solution. I mean, I think that's going to provide a lot of dignity and security and opportunity for folks in these really challenging times. And it's heartbreaking to keep having these conversations, honestly. You know, additionally, I, topic change. I just wanted to relay a message that I got from our trash haulers, having worked with them on amending their operating hours. The message is, if you have expired bear spray, don't throw it in the trash. This is really important because I'm sure people are aware we're coming out of winter, bears are becoming more active. You're probably looking in your garage at your bear spray, and some of your old bear spray is expired. When that gets thrown away in normal trash, it's a pressurized canister that can get crushed inside the truck, and that can cause really dangerous moments for our trash haulers. So I just want to let people know that you can dispose of expired bear spray at the New Missoula Household Chemical Disposal Facility at Home Resource. So we used to do, you know, targeted days of hazmat and hazardous chemical pickups. Because of the demand for that, we've now moved to an actual facility. So Home Resource provides that. There's lots of different options to drop off household hazardous waste now year-round. And the facility is at Home Resource 1515 Wyoming Street. So if you have expired bear spray or motor oil or paint or any other hazardous spray or chemical, don't wait for the week where we normally would pick it up. You can now drop that stuff off at Home Resource. Thanks.
Excellent. Great reminder. Thank you. Counselor Nugent?
Thank you, Mayor Davis. I would point out that that is one of many small things that the city actually contributes to. So so much people wonder where some spending is, and that's a little bit of it. I just want to echo everyone's comments. I know that this is and continues to be a very difficult conversation. I will say that I am appreciative that as a city, we are trying a new approach. And I'm aware that sometimes when we try something new and we change from something we have been doing, that that creates angst, and I know that it won't be perfect. But I think that some of what we're already seeing from community members stepping up, from community organizations stepping up, your comments about MIC looking to double their 100 volunteers for the Housing Advocacy Network to 200 volunteers is tremendous. I think that what many of us have heard from people in the community, how can they help? How can they, you know, contribute to the city's goal of pulling people out of being unhoused and getting them into permanent housing where they don't have to worry about where they're going to sleep each night? Because we know that that is not creating positive long-term outcomes for anybody. I also want to say that I do appreciate the Missoulian for reaching out to all council and asking for comments. I was somewhat disappointed with some of the coverage and some of the other outlets that seem to try and make this a mayor-against-a-few-people thing. And that's not at all what leadership is. That's not all that this is. I appreciate you recognizing that you have a responsibility to come back to us and to the citizens with a budget every year and understanding where you feel we're going to be at. And also know that this council gave direction, or a version of this council a few years ago, that this is a path that we will go on to eventually move on from Johnson Street. And, you know, that was a long and contentious conversation at the time we had it. But I appreciate the bold steps to, ahead of schedule, try and do something different. And I'm excited to see how this goes. I know that in the coming months and in the budget season, different folks will have different opinions on how we should spend our limited funds. And I would say, when it comes to things like the Johnson Street Shelter or other programs, it's probably going to be very important that if we bring items that are going to cost the city money, we also specify where that money is going to come from. And I just want to kind of put it out there that that is something that I will be asking right up front on any referral that comes forward, that we have those conversations. Because if we are, you know, facing the structural deficit, which we've been talking about the entire time that I've been on council, we need to start looking at it as we can't just say, "Hey, do this." We need to say, "Okay, but where is the funding?" Kind of kind of conversation.
Excellent. All right. Well, thank you for your comments. I really appreciate it. And thank you for your trust and willingness to try something new. And it is the necessity of this situation. I mean, we are at a turning point where we really need to make a responsible decision. And I think having a five-month runway between April to the end of the contract that we currently have with the Pavarello Center really enables us to put forward a solid plan. I want to thank members of the public that came in and spoke this evening because, boy, don't I know it, how tired service providers are. I can also speak to that from the city staff. City staff have been working on this in various ways for a number of years, as have several of these council members. And folks that are doing this work day in and day out, though, with service providers doing this work is incredibly rewarding, and it's difficult. And so I just want to thank again the folks that we partner with in the community to do this work every day. We, as you know, and hope that people go online to find On Our Way Home, which is the new community's developed strategy. When I say "community," it means that it was a group of folks that guided this process, including folks with lived experience, living houseless, folks from the service provider organizations across the city, business representatives, a whole host of folks that helped develop this new strategy. And the takeaway is that the consultant, Homebase, they'd reflected on a few things about Missoula. It's not a huge surprise. We have a very invested and active and engaged community. And for one, our size, in particular in a state that doesn't provide support for this work and very little federal funding in this realm, we've done a lot with the resources that we have and continue to do that. We have an incredibly engaged citizenry, and we have an incredibly engaged service provider network, also a very tired service provider network. And so that is absolutely something that is at the forefront as we work on this to identify how we can address those concerns going forward. I heard reference in comment earlier about the $1 million that the city has allocated to basically urban camping response. I want to remind folks that part of that is the ability for us to stand up a vehicle permit program. In order to do that successfully, we had to hire staff. And so thank you, City Council, for allocating money to do that. Currently, 55 people have gone through the permitting program, and things seem to be working quite well. One of the things, just as an example, why do you have to hire staff to do that? We go out there and we pick up garbage from folks that are living in RVs because we haven't necessarily designated one part of our community for that. Folks that are applying for these permits, they let us know where they are in compliance with the ordinance, and we help them be successful. And so I appreciate the investment that you've made. And I would say that also trying something new, that's not something that we had in place before. That was informed by the Urban Camping Working Group. That is something also that Homebase said, "Congratulations on a process that was well thought out." That ordinance has a lot of detail when you compare other communities that also have an ordinance that allows for urban camping and folks to sleep outside. And while certainly not everybody got what they want, which they wouldn't in that kind of a situation, because people want so many different things, it did bring a lot of voices to the table and an opportunity to air quite a few ideas and put those forward. The other thing that I do want to say that the council is not pulling funding from the Johnson that the council is not pulling funding from the Johnson Street Shelter. This funding has been one time only, and it's been utilized well. Again, thank you to the Pavarello Center for the work that you and your staff have done there to be able to keep the Johnson Street open for as long as we've been able to. I was going to bring a book with me. I left it in my office. But it's called When We Walk By. And that book really illustrates ways in which everyday people can help solve for the issues surrounding houselessness, which is more than just a home. You know, housing only doesn't work either. We need to make sure that people are continuing to be connected. And some of the things that we're talking about today, where people are able to help people be successful through things like the Housing Advocate Network or contributing $50 to the housing sprint, are ways in which people can make an impact. So I've got some information I think we'll share at a council update later. Has to do with some of the successes of Blue Hair in Place, which is the permanent supportive housing that was built by Homeward and the Missoula Housing Authority, managed by Partnership Health Center and the Pavarello Center. It does show that when folks are able to access housing, the majority of those folks were able to keep those homes. I think it's like 78%. Now, those folks are able to keep those homes because there are services there to help them be stable. And I think that is one of the things that we want to make sure that we are keeping in mind as folks find housing solutions going forward. So I'm excited to be able to continue to come back and report on this. I appreciate the level setting. We've got to make sure that we're managing expectations here. We know that there's going to be folks that are still going to need to be outside, and we'll help them do that successfully. But again, we're going to continue to help try to connect people with housing and services ultimately to the solution to end homelessness. So with that, it's a big topic of the evening. And I too want to shift gears and extend my deep condolences, condolences to the Ehrlich family, to the community at large for that situation, and to our gratitude to our first responders for managing a tough situation there. And with that, I will go ahead and adjourn our meeting at 7:54 PM. Thank you.